Okay. Okay, you're live.
We are live, so that means we can get ready to go Facebook Live. Are we on live? Yes, we are Facebook Live. Thank you, everyone. And we are streaming from the Youth Shelter Program of Westchester. Thank you so very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience. And the reason why I thank you for your patience is because we have a distinguished panel assembled today, and they are here because our young people asked them to be here. So let me just get started quickly. I'd like to first introduce Judge Jared Rice. He will bring us greetings. Judge Rice.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you to the Youth Shelter of Westchester County. Thank you to the scholars. Thank you to the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau. Thank you to every single panelist that is here today to discuss these very important issues with our youth. As Ms. Alexander said, my name is Judge Jared Rice. I am here in the New York City Court, and I have been a judge for a few months now. I started January 1st, 2020. Prior to that, I was on the New York City Council for nine years. And I was also a private attorney. I was an attorney. I was a public defender in the city of Mount Vernon. And one thing that has, I have learned throughout the years, is just the value of youth voices, the ability of youth today to make change. I remember a few years ago, in working with so many of the partners that I see here, we advocated for the Raise the Age laws. And those were laws where New York State was one of two states in the nation which criminalized the behavior of 16- and 17-year-olds automatically. We protested, we marched, we advocated, we got legislation passed. We're now Raise the Age as a Law. Bail reform, discovery reform, and even most recently with Governor Cuomo and the New York State Legislature, now we have police reform. Laws are a really important piece today as far as what can society can do. And even more excitingly, today, June 13th was now named a New York State law starting next year. So I do not want to understate the fact that laws are critically important. I just want to leave you with one story, one lesson. During the days of slavery throughout the United States, throughout the South, it was against the law for Black people to read. It was against the law for people to teach Black people how to read and write. And if you were caught doing so, if you were white, you could face a fine or imprisonment. If you were Black, you could face lashes or even worse. And I always take that lesson with me because I know the value of reading. I know the value of imparting myself with knowledge. And you have a wealth of experience today through all this, all the panelists. And I want to implore all the youth today to obtain as much knowledge as you can. And don't let this be the start or the end. Let this be a journey that you continue on because we need your voices. We need you speaking up. We need you asking questions. We need you advocating. We need everybody working together so that our society, our laws, our policies, our education system is just and fair for all. And this is exactly what we're doing. So thank you so much, Ms. Alexander, for hosting us. Thank you so much for everybody participating. And it's my pleasure to welcome you all to this joyous event.
Judge Rice, thank you so much. And let me just say, not only is it joyous, it's a joyous event, but this is a working event. So this is going to be a working hour. And it's a working hour because our young scholars said so. They have come, they have sat, they have put together some serious questions. They have given a lot of thought. Hence, we call it the open mic because the mic is open and they have shown up. And I believe they're going to show out today in a way that you've never heard them before. Now, before we get started, I just want to say thank you to Judge Rice. We know you have to leave us. We are grateful and we appreciate you taking the time to give us that overview of why we're here and to give us those really important remarks. But we thank you and we hope to see you soon. Blessings, Judge Rice.
Take care, everybody.
Let us turn it over to Pastor Darren Morton. Pastor will bring us additional greetings. Thank you. Pastor, is your mic open? Let me scroll down. Pastor Morton's mic is not open. Can we open up his mic? And if we need some time, I'm just going to ask. There you go. All right, Pastor Morton. We're ready for you.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I want to say good afternoon to everyone that is joining us today and in particular to us scholars. So I want to bring you greetings and welcome on behalf of the Youth Shelter of Westchester as I serve as the president of the board there. And so we are ever so grateful to have this opportunity for our young people to have intelligent, purposeful conversation and dialogue around issues that are affecting them today. It's always good for us to be able to provide that opportunity for our young people to express themselves, but also to hear from those more sagged individuals who have lived life a little longer, but also to learn from them. And so we encourage you all to be actively involved today. And don't let this just be the stopgap, but let this be the beginning and the springboard for what it is that you will do and how you will affect the community going forward. Again, I want to thank you. I want to thank you, Ms. Alexander, for being our moderator today. And also especially thank Joanne for the leadership that she is providing to the Youth Shelter of Westchester. God bless you and continue to do as you do.
Indeed. We want to thank you, Executive Director Joanne Dunn, because you are a visionary. And without your ear, and more importantly, she actually had her ear open into the ground to hear our young people. So we thank you for that. We thank you for bringing us all together today. Let's just take a moment, please, and welcome Mayor Sean Patterson Howard. Mayor, we're ready for you. Is our mayor's mic open? While we wait for our mayor's mic to open, I just want to share with you how we're going to spend the afternoon in conversation. We kind of want to drill this down to three segments. The first segment will be focused on education. The scholars came up with several questions centered around education, particularly their future. So we have several questions dealing with education. And then we're going to talk about police brutality, racism, and injustice. Clearly, clearly, we know what's happening right before our very eyes. We are all aware, we are knowledgeable, and we are engaged, outraged, concerned. That being said, we have a lot of questions. And these young men had a lot of questions around this. All of our scholars had a lot of questions. And then finally, civic engagement. They want to know what they can do. They want to know what is the call to action? What policies can be written? What do they do when they return to the classroom? What do they need to do for their voices to be heard, which will ultimately translate into policy? So those are the three topics. And again, to our distinguished panel, I am going to tell you, the questions are for everybody. The questions are for everyone. So as I switch gears, I want to make sure that our mayor is ready?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mayor Sean Patterson Howard. And I am absolutely excited and pleased to be a part of this virtual town hall meeting today. We are living in a time that is unprecedented. It is a time of, we're dealing with a pandemic, but we're also dealing with worldwide social justice right now. We are seeing not only our community, but our country and nation and the world really focusing in on social justice, police brutality, inequities, and in a way that we have not seen in decades. I think this is happening in a way that we have not seen since the 60s. And we have to make sure that we seize this time. So we have to make sure as we approach these critical conversations that we're not approaching them with cowardice and political correctness because that won't get us anywhere. We have to have courageous conversations and have a clear voice and a clarion call to action so that we can help not only our young people shape and frame the narrative, but help to move our community forward with policies and programs and systemic change that is going to make a great impact. We have to seize this moment. And that's why I said we have to be careful about just being politically correct because I think political correctness is what got us here. But having courageous conversations with a clear voice is what's going to take us to the next level of conversation. So I look forward to very dynamic conversation and engaging our scholars and doing the great work that I know that our community can do together. So thank you so much for inviting me.
And speaking of courage, Mayor, thank you so very much. Being courageous. And that is why we're here today because we have the courage. And I just want to go to our scholars, if we can. I just want to introduce them. And if they are ready, if they want to just take a few minutes and tell us why you're here and why you wanted our panel. Because again, you designed, you decided the panel. Edwina, William, and Finelli, are we ready? Do we need a minute?
We do not need a minute. The scholars are here and ready. So if we could find them. Edwina is ready, as you can tell. William is ready. They can't unmute themselves. So Clarissa, if you unmute them, we'll be ready. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
They have to unmute themselves. They're unmuted on my end.
You guys got the wrong one.
Okay. How we doing? I see that. Okay, I'm getting a message that we're unable to mute ourselves. In the meantime, while we work on this, if you will allow me to switch gears for a moment and give me the opportunity to introduce our panel. I keep talking about this distinguished panel. You know all of these people. We are very familiar with their work. We know their work. We know their, we know them. And we're just happy that you had a chance to take time to be with us today. So I just want to start with Louis Molina, First Deputy Commissioner, Westchester County Department of Corrections. Lieutenant Christina Mann, City of Mount Vernon Police Department. Sherrilyn Pulver, Deputy Commissioner, Westchester County Department of Probation. Dr. Jamia Harris Madden, Executive Director, Westchester County Youth Bureau. Thank you for being here. I just want to say hello to Debbie Burell Butler. She's our Executive Director, City of Mount Vernon Youth Bureau. Allison Lake, welcome. Welcome, Allison, Executive Director, Westchester Children's Association. Dr. Kenneth Hamilton, Superintendent of Schools, Mount Vernon School District. Thank you for being here. Tom Kleiner, Executive Director, Westchester Putnam Workforce Development Board. And Attorney Cliff Christoffi, I hope I said the last name correct. Christoffi, you will correct me if I did not. Counselor to the Board of Education, Mount Vernon City School District. Thank you all for being here. Can we switch gears and go back to our young scholars?
Yes, I have, let me start. You guys turn your thing.
Edwina says, "I'm still unable to mute myself." That's okay. Is anybody unmuted? Who? Edwina will come back. That's fine. It's all right. Anybody else unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, who's that? I didn't catch the voice.
William Phillips.
Okay, let's, William.
Good afternoon, panelists. My name is William Phillips. I'm a Mount Vernon High School alum, class of 2017, and I'm also an undergraduate student at the University of Buffalo. It's great pleasure to speak to you all. And I am offering questions on behalf of the youth of Mount Vernon, Youth Bureau, the children of Westchester, to pretty much speak on the current political climate and how we feel oppressed and how we want to see change.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, William. And I know you've got, I have your questions in front of me, and I know everyone has had the opportunity to see your questions. So we're going to get to them. Finelli.
So we're going to skip Finelli, and we're going to use Nicholas Davis. Seems like we're having some trouble with our young people, so I have Nicholas Davis here in front of us who's going to give an introduction and talk about why he's here today.
Nicholas, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
I'm glad that you're here. All right, I just wanted to say, how's everybody doing? And good afternoon, everybody. As y'all heard earlier, my name is Nicholas Davis. And I just want to say, I'm thrilled and I'm glad to be here right now in this forum. I just want to say, I decided to take part in this because I wanted to be a voice for our youth. That's not, that words fell into deaf ears. I just want to say, I want to prove not only to myself, but to everybody that youth voices does matter. Thank you.
Well done, Nicholas. Well done. You know, since we have our panel, can you just take a moment to introduce yourself? I'll call your name. I'll call your name. And then if you can just tell us why you're here. We know your title and we do know your work, but we want to know why you are here on this panel. I want to start with Louis Molina, First Deputy Commissioner, Westchester County Department of Corrections.
So good afternoon to everyone, especially to our young scholars. I'm honored to join all of you this afternoon. I think the topics that we're going to discuss today are important, and they're also historical. And I think it's vital for a person that's in my position as a First Deputy Commissioner of a law enforcement agency that young people of color see a person of color in my positions. And persons of color that are in my position should talk about their roles, especially with our youth. And we should share our thoughts on how we got here today, especially as it relates to criminal justice system and what we are doing as persons of color in our roles to help reform that system that really historically has disenfranchised our community, especially young boys and men of color. So I take a lot of pride in that. I think it's vital that I'm with all of you today. And I look forward to learning as much from you. And I look forward to sharing my thoughts on a lot of these issues with our young scholars today. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Molina. Lieutenant Krista Mann.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon. Thank you once again for allowing me to be on this panel. Thank you, youth, for actually wanting to give your voice to this. It's not new that the youth are involved in any time we see any kind of civil unrest. So what you are doing is historical and just in the past of what you've been doing as our ancestors have done. Why am I here? I'm here because I'm a Mount Vernon resident. I'm here because I'm a mother. So all of these things affect me not only as a police officer, but just as a civilian. So I'm here to learn what you guys have to say to me from the youth, what your voices want to share with me and how I can bring that back to my department so that we can better serve you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Well said. Sherrilyn Pulver.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to thank Ms. Dunn very much. I can't see where you are on the screen. But I want to thank you very much for inviting me and also for your leadership at the Youth Shelter. And I'm very honored to be among this very curious panel of people. And I'm very eager to hear what our scholars have to say. The reason I'm here, in addition to wanting very much to hear what our young people are thinking, really is for two reasons. One, I've been a lawyer in the criminal justice system for almost 40 years. I've done, I've worn a lot of different hats. I was a prosecutor at one time. Now I work for the probation department. But in between that period of time, for over 30 years, I worked as a criminal defense attorney right here in Westchester. And I was very close to many of the issues that are, I think, fundamental to our conversation today. As a person who was one of many people working very hard to try and eradicate inequity, you know, I have to come to you today and say that I am both sad that we're not more successful, but very hopeful, knowing that there is a movement. We have to seize this moment. I think, I think after all this time, I think it's here. And I think it's up to you, young scholars and your peers, to really lead us to the next, to the next phase. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherrilyn. Dr. Jamia Harris Madden. Can we unmute her, please? Or you might be able to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay. I hope you can hear me now.
We sure can.
Great. Thank you to everyone. I'm privileged to be a part of this panel, especially to Mayor Patterson and Joanne Tracy for allowing me to actually have a place and space within this forum, particularly since I'm no longer at the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau. But at the county level, we are certainly in support of all the work that is being done in the great city of Mount Vernon. But there's an investment that's really inherent for me. And what that means is, as a native of Mount Vernon and also someone who has worked within various spaces, whether it be youth employment, juvenile justice, social justice, education, and all the spaces in between, it was necessary for me to be a part of this, knowing that I also have a panel at 6:00 PM. And so I just want to say, excuse me, in advance, as we talk about COVID-19 and the related illnesses of children and youth. But my interest is really to ensure that all young people, regardless of zip code, have the social, emotional, psychological, physical, but educational supports that they need to thrive. And so as we talk about the challenges that we're facing today, if I'm going to be candid, as an parent, as a young person of color, I am deeply deluged with emotion. And for my young scholars, I want you to always hear words and then go look them up so that you broaden your vocabulary. I do it as an adult. Many of us do it. It's important to learn from each other. So deluged, I am overcome with emotions, given everything that is happening. I have a Black man as a husband. I have three princesses I'm raising. And as far as I'm concerned, all of the youth in Mount Vernon and children are my children and my youth. And so that is great here. And so I want to thank you for putting this panel together. Thank you for having the insight and the wherewithal, given your situation and your personal situations at home and your daily lives, to really bring this forward. And again, I'm happy to hear from my colleagues as we start to tackle and, you know, work our way out of this mess, I'm going to say, this dysfunction that is really plaguing our hearts and making sure that there's opportunities for all, not just opportunities for that others think deserve opportunity, opportunities that we deserve. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you so much. We're going to move now to Allison Lake.
Good afternoon, everyone. You can hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Allison. Thank you.
Great. So my name is Allison Lake, and as Executive Director of Westchester Children's Association, I am here today to hear from our scholars. Westchester Children's Association has a great and historic sort of partnership with the Youth Shelter. They were instrumental in the advocacy we led here in Westchester County around the Raise the Age legislation that Judge Rice mentioned earlier. And so this, to me, is a continuation of that partnership. We've been fortunate to offer advocacy training to young people throughout Westchester. And we want to do more of that if that's what's needed. And so what brings me here today as a born and bred in Westchester, the future of our young people here is something that matters to me deeply. As a Black woman, obviously, the events that are happening here in the nation are troubling, are heart-wrenching. As the mother of a young Black man, I need to know that we are all going to work for a future that is better for him and for everyone. In a county as diverse as Westchester, we need to have the courageous conversations that the mayor spoke of. We need to look and hit the data head-on that shows us the disparities, the disproportionate rates of young people that are incarcerated, people of color, the disproportionate rates of those students that are suspended from school and that end up in the criminal justice system. And so I'm here today to lend my voice to the group, to offer whatever services and supports that I have. But really, I come in partnership and ready to sit back and to listen to the young people and help them lead us towards a better future.
Allison, we are glad that you are here, and we thank you for lending your voice because we welcome you. We are grateful. I just want to say this. Dr. Kenneth Hamilton, I just want to say thank you because we need to be transparent. Dr. Hamilton said yes at the very last minute. I'm going to tell you why. It was because of the questions that the young scholars posed to us when we got together on Monday. Their questions centered on education. They were so, at one point, we realized, hold up, we missed it. We missed it, and we got it right because of Edwina, because of William, because of Finelli. We got it right because of Jordan. So I just want to thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for moving your schedule around and being here with us. Welcome.
Thank you. My pleasure. I'm honored to be here this evening and appreciate the invitation. I've been an educator for 35 years, and there is no way I could be an effective leader without understanding from the perspective of our youth what their concerns and issues are. And I have tried throughout my career to stay connected to children. When I contemplated being a superintendent, when I was encouraged by mentors to become a superintendent, one of the things I was very concerned about was, how would I be able to maintain my relationships with students in this position? And I had a very wise mentor tell me that you get to control that. You get to navigate those relationships on your own because you have the power and authority to do that. So throughout my career, I have done that. And I'm here this evening because I think the questions posed are essential. I think the voices are essential. And while it is devastating that people have lost their lives, I think the silver lining in this is it has forced a national conversation, an international conversation about issues of equality, particularly as it relates to our men of color. So I'm pleased to be in this forum this evening. Unfortunately, people had to die for it to happen. But nonetheless, let those deaths not be in vain, and let's forge ahead as I try to provide leadership here for the almost 8,000 children in our district. But understanding that the scope is bigger because our children will become parents. And they then get the responsibility and have the awesome task of continuing to carry the torch when most of us will be sitting somewhere on a beach or in a rocking chair, and the conversation must go on.
Doctor, thank you so very much. Thank you. We appreciate you. Tom Kleiner, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I'm the Executive Director of the Westchester Putnam Workforce Development Board. And Jamia, who spoke earlier today, is one of the members of our board. And our mission is always to connect those to employment, particularly those with barriers to employment. And, you know, two months ago, that was a fairly discreet part of the population that we really put our heart and soul into working with our career centers in Mount Vernon and White Plains. But of course, since then, the world has changed in major ways. You know, we obviously are dealing with the pandemic. But now we're also dealing with social justice and equity issues more than ever. And those two things really come together in a meaningful way. Because even when the pandemic leaves us, we're still, those who still have barriers to employment, those in our major cities in Westchester, are those who are really are going to still be our major focus. And we have to work with all of you. We have good and successful youth programs for summer youth, for pre-apprenticeship programs, for reentry programs. They're going to be more important now than they ever were before. So I'm interested also to hear from all of you, and I appreciate everybody taking their time to be with us today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And finally, Attorney Cliff Christoffi, thank you so much. And I have to say, before you speak, I want another special thank you because you too changed your schedule to be here with our scholars once again because of the kinds of questions that they posed to us on Monday. So I'm glad you're here. Attorney?
Thank you. And thank you all for having me. It's pronounced Kristoff, by the way.
It's pronounced Kristoff, by the way.
Kristoff. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So professionally, I am the in-house attorney for the City School District. But I am also a former prosecutor. And one thing that I noticed is that while most defendants look like me, most of the prosecutors were Caucasian and more than likely Caucasian males. And as a black professional, you tend to notice when you are one of the only or one of the few people in the room. Personally, I'm not okay with everything that's been happening in the world. And I haven't been okay for a while. But these current events overwhelmed me to action for a particular reason, now that I am a father of three children, one of whom is a son. And I'm growing increasingly aware of my duty as a parent of black children. How do I prepare them? How do I protect them? And how do I pass on the baton so that they are able to continue the fight and continue the march towards social justice? But as far as the Youth Bureau and our young scholars, it's a Frederick Douglass quote that motivates me, and it says, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." The children are our future, and for us to do our job well, we need to know what the scholar's up to, what they want to know, and what they are feeling, more importantly. And so I'm honored to be part of the team with Dr. Hamilton, working to build stronger children that are going to change the world.
Attorney Kristoff, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you. Thank you. And I just want to take a minute to give a special thank you. And I wanted to hear from Debbie Burell Butler. Debbie, is your mic open?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for the opportunity to be a panelist and also co-sponsoring this event with the Westchester Youth Shelter. I am here because I want to be part of the solution and encourage and motivate our young scholars to achieve the changes that they deserve. I am a product of the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau, as well as the Mount Vernon School District, and been here for 27 years. And so I hear the problems. Worked in youth services for 19 years. And so I just want to be part of the solution, and any way necessary I could do so, I'm honored to work with these youth because their voices count.
Yes, they do. And thank you for everything that you put together. And this is the reason why this panel is so packed with all of these thought leaders who are making things happen in our town. I just want to go back. Finelli, is your mic open?
It is now. Good afternoon.
All right.
So my name, as it was just, is Anthony Anthony Finelli. I am representing the Youth Shelter Program of Westchester. I am a resident from Atlantic New York. And my purpose of being here is this voice is definitely powerful and necessary, and I just wanted to be part of it. So I really thank you for inviting me to this program.
Excellent. Miss anybody? Is Jordan here?
Jordan, my name is, give us three seconds.
We'll wait for Jordan. Jordan, thank you so much.
I'm also unable to mute on now. It's Edwina.
Edwina, yes. And keep our voice on the page. I like seeing Tom, but I like to see our young scholars.
Edwina's mic is open?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay.
Jordan's here. I'm right here.
How's everybody doing? I'm good. I'm here because I feel like I should be heard. Not everybody gets the opportunity to speak with someone in their mind, especially to people like this during a time like this. I feel like it's good to just speak in your mind.
Not only are you speaking your mind, what you had, what you've said has made this come to fruition. What you said, the actions that you wanted to see this, we took the action and made this happen. So thank you for that. I just want to get into Edwina. I'm going straight to your question. I want to start with education. So everybody, let's just think about education. And I know we are very, very emotional. We're very... We're upset, you know. I can tell you, we can say all the things that we're feeling right now because of the crisis and what we're seeing happening to our black folks. We know this. But what's interesting is, before we get into the racism and the injustices that our young scholars are experiencing, because they've been very, very candid about it, they wanted to start with education. They wanted to talk about their future. And they wanted to talk candidly about things that are happening in the school system that they have witnessed. So, Edwina, I'm going to start with your question, and you can chime in with me. You brought the question, and you posed it. How can you make sure that schools in communities predominantly filled with blacks will be just as adequately funded as schools with predominantly white students? Can this be attributed to the limited diversity in communities? Your first question. Would like to address Edwina.
I'll give it a quick start, if I may. So the first thing I will say is, complete the census. That's part of how those kinds of decisions are made. But another part of the equation, just so that we are all aware, is funding is based in part on distribution of wealth in various communities. Those communities where the economic base is higher, a larger portion of the burden for providing educational resources come from the taxpayers. And at the other end of the continuum, the difference is offset by state aid. The problem that we face is oftentimes the difference between the two is so great that the state often does not carry its burden. So what can we do as citizens? What can we do as taxpayers? What can we do as voters in order to change that? One of the things that we have to do is hold our legislators accountable for funding education appropriately. So when the budgets are done at the state level, there is money allocated for school districts. And often, that money does not make its way to the school district. So those disparities continue to broaden across, not just in Mount Vernon, but across the state, particularly impacting communities primarily composed of people of color. So I want to give you a framework for the issue, but then talk about solutions. And the solutions really are about stabilizing funding formulas to ensure that students in communities like Mount Vernon have the same access to resources that augment, support, and supplement services like communities in Bronxville, for lack of a better example. Because the distribution of wealth is so largely different, it's important that we understand that. And lastly, the formula is antiquated. They had not done a reassessment, a reevaluation of the distribution of wealth in communities like Mount Vernon. So the base that they use to determine how state aid is calculated is based on a very old formula. When wealth may have been much higher in Mount Vernon. But now that because that has changed, the recipe has changed, the formula has not changed to match that.
I'm sorry, if I may just add quickly, so to that point, there is litigation, there's a lawsuit against the governor, against the State Education Department to revise the funding formula and to provide additional funds for all the years. The funding formula wasn't revised. And there's also legislation that has been proposed to also address the issue of the funding formula, to make sure that the districts that have less financial resources get more from the state.
And we are happy that you came to take this seat today. And I'm just going to say thank you, but I'm going to turn it back to Edwina. Edwina, if your mic is open, that was your question. Do you want to expound on it? Or did you get a good answer to help you walk away and start to think about the answer?
I think the answer was very appropriate, and it helped me understood what goes into how funding is distributed between different types of communities. My question, I guess, to expand on, can this be attributed to the limited diversity in communities? Is that, since you talked about the... You were talking about how there's a large income, based on their income, that communities with Mount Vernon, where our income is lower, and other communities. Is that because of there's so much more POC and areas and other areas are just predominantly white, which causes a higher wealth?
That is in part the issue, but I don't want to... So here's the problem. Part of what this conversation has to entail is not just about race, but gender equality as well. So that women earn proportionate to men, same work, same pay. So to the extent that people of color are underemployed or unemployed, that certainly equates to how funding works. And education, of course, is designed to be the great equalizer so that it puts everybody on the same playing field. But all things being equal, unfortunately, we still live in a world where if everything is equal in terms of experience and education, oftentimes employers do not necessarily extend the kind of courtesy generally afforded to people who are not of color when it comes to hiring practices. And that, of course, then impacts the distribution of wealth in communities comprised primarily of people of color. So there has to be some effort to stabilize and equalize the playing field in terms of how people are paid and their access to high-paying jobs. That will impact funding formulas.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could just add, Tracy, just not to belabor the point, I think much has been said in terms of this aid formula, and it's how it's not proportionate to the need. Also, the wealth gap, I applaud you, Edwina, for understanding that because it is a great wealth gap, particularly within Westchester County. But just to offer, since we're talking solutions, there are also alternative pathways to support education. And that's why you have Mrs. Butler Burrell on the line and myself, representing the Youth Bureau system. Because as a system throughout New York State, we're able to pursue funding that school districts may not be able to, as well as nonprofit organizations that are able to supplement some of the learning, supplement and support, I should say. We could never replace a school, and certainly could not replace a Hamilton, who's stellar, but certainly can offer opportunities to young people to learn, as well as earn. And I'm sure you'll get into this later, Tracy, about youth employment. But supplemental types of opportunities, such as credit recovery, such as online learning and tutoring and supports to help parents, so that there is somewhat of a stabilizer outside of the schools. Because we recognize that learning can take place anywhere. The best place is in the schools. However, there's also learning that I'm sure you're aware of through the Youth Bureau's and nonprofits. So I just wanted to add that in. As we look at grant funding and opportunities that come through these organizations, it's important to note that thousands of young people are also served provided meals and also educated through that medium.
Thank you for adding that, doctor. We appreciate that. And anybody, this is why we're here. Please, we need you to jump in. Stop me if I'm going to another question because this is the information that our young people need, and they need to hear it. In fact, wait a second, we need to hear it. I need to hear it. So this way, we know what to do moving forward. Anybody else want to weigh on this heavy question that Edwina posed to us before I move forward?
This is Allison Lake. Can you hear me?
Yes, Allison. Please, go forward.
So I think that, you know, where we are today is forcing all of us to continue to learn, to look back. In history, we hear the terms about systemic and institutional racism. And, you know, when we think about where we are today, decisions that were made to have property taxes in New York fund schools as opposed to the state or even the federal government, I think we all should, could go back and learn, when were those decisions made and why? It's no accident that we are where we are, at the inequities that we see, whether it's social, economic, or racism. There were institutions and systems that have been put in place, you know, 50-plus years ago that have led us to this situation. So I was trying to look at a documentary that I recently looked at around education and when the decision really was for it not to be funded nationally as other countries, you know, throughout the world, fund their education system. And that is part of what has led us to this situation today. So I applaud the scholars and young people for their questions and charge all of us to look back at history more, for whether we're talking education, employment, housing, healthcare, it's all relevant to that.
And that's the history lesson that we need, Allison. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to switch gears for a second. And while we're speaking about education, the question came up by Jordan, and it's very simple. Why does Mount Vernon only have two high schools? Now, Jordan, you can help me out on this because the conversation is more than just looking at two high schools. But it's really looking at the mindset, the way that some students think about what school they are in. So it's about perception, as well as the physical buildings to high schools. Jordan, am I saying that correctly? Did I get it?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So hang tight, Jordan. Let's get some answers.
All right. So firstly, we have three high schools. We have Mount Vernon High. We have Mount Vernon Steam Academy. And then we have Fortin, which is our performing arts center. So we have been very aggressive with creating multiple pathways for our students to success. And by doing so, we've created three theme-based high schools so that students have an option in terms of where they may have the greatest opportunity for success and where they have the greatest interest. So students who have an interest in STEAM or STEM educational opportunities, they have an opportunity to make application as eighth graders into the STEAM Academy if they want to pursue an opportunity to go into a career in technical educational program where they can graduate with either the credentials necessary to get into a comprehensive four-year college or go right into the workforce with credentials that certify them to get in a position that is a high-paying position. Or if they want to perform, explore their gift in the arts, they can make application to the Fortin School, which is where our performing arts, visual and performing arts program is. So there are indeed three high schools in Mount Vernon, and students have an option. They are not relegated to any specific high school. They get to make a choice about those high schools. And that is designed very specifically to create multiple pathways of success for our students.
Jordan?
Yes.
Would you like to follow up?
I feel like in Mount Vernon, I feel like there's limited opportunities in the community. I just wanted to ask them if there's a way that we could, like, make more opportunities for us to stay on the right path, even after we graduate.
That's a great question. And I don't want to dominate the conversation, but I will say this. I think it is essential that we make connections with students beyond high school. And we have been developing programs that will help us do that so that we get a sense of how successful our students are, either in the workforce, if that's what they choose to do, or once they get in college through a program called Naviance, which helps us monitor how students are performing academically. And we're also interested in not just getting kids in college, but seeing how successful they are while they're there and making sure that they complete their college experience. We know that oftentimes, students get into college, and the dropout rate around the second year of college is pretty high. So we want to gather data that helps us address that and ensure that we have the tools necessary and to make sure our students don't have a need to take remedial courses their first year of college, which becomes another opportunity to expend that amount of time in college and cost money. So right now, students can earn up to as many as 30 credits in their high school experience with certain colleges that we have partnerships with.
And while we're there, I just want to, while we're there, I just want to take a moment to circle over to William's question. And the thought was the trajectory. We're talking about high school. We're talking about college. But William wanted to look at it from a... But William wanted to look at it from a standpoint of middle school, in fact, elementary school. And really asked the question of, can we consider mentorship programs for the Mount Vernon youth? As they transition from elementary school to middle school that continues until graduation.
Yeah, William and I have actually talked about that, uh, William and I, uh, we stay connected, he's one of my mentees and he has raised that. And I appreciate him keeping that on our radar and William actually comes back and provides uh some of that mentorship. Um, so we definitely are interested in developing that kind of mentorship and support for students as early as elementary school. Our M D K initiative is a great jumpstart to that, but we acknowledge there's a lot more that we need to do. And that includes partnering with folks who are on this call and bringing together resources with our city, with our Youth Bureau. And other organizations that will help us to to do that. One of the things that we have to understand is education is a community issue. It is not exclusive to the school district, but it's something that as a community, we have to work on together. And I see that happening, I've seen that happen, um, since I've been in Mount Vernon. There is tremendous synergy in the city around harnessing all of our efforts and resources. And we just have to now remove the barriers that exist so that we can do that more effectively. So that there is this opportunity to connect students as early as elementary school so that their transitions are smoother.
Excellent, and I think I saw a question in the chat, I hope I, um, it just went away, it talked about what percentage of students? Um, that question, yes.
Percentage of kids in Mount Vernon graduate college, what percentage of kids don't go into college? That's from Ken Hamilton.
Um, so right now, our data relative to students who. Let me make sure I'm reading the question of kids in Mount graduate college. Um, we don't have that data right now because our Naviance program is relatively new. And that's what tracks what happens when kids leave us. Um, and we do know that our number of students that are going into two and four-year colleges have increased dramatically. Um, more so to four-year colleges, quite frankly, and we're seeing a decline in the number of students going to two-year colleges. Uh, but more going directly into four-year colleges, which I I'm not really sure what that represents. Um, but our graduation rates right now are around eighty percent district-wide. Now, of course, we have uh information um for specific schools, but on district-wide. Um, we're in our, in our eighties, which exceeds the state, the state rate for graduation from high school. Um, do you have data from the last year and a half? Not at my disposal, but I can certainly get that if if someone wants to like email that to me, I can get that information. I don't have it at the tip of my, at the tip of my tongue right now.
Also, um, this is Debbie Burrell Butler, I would like to also add that the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau has currently nineteen different programs. And of the nineteen fifteen offers mentorship. Um, I think one of the things is that, um, not to put it back on the youth, but the youth. Anyone on this panel list wouldn't mind being a mentor or link you to someone, but the youth has to be vocal. And and ask us to if we would like to be their mentor. I mean, we could want to be your mentor, but if you're not welcoming us with an open arm, it's difficult for us to do that. And um, I just hope for the end of this um event. That the the information that we have here, it will be spread amongst everyone. And we will let everyone know that, you know, the resource, some of the resource that we're asking or requesting is already here. We just have to do the research and make the connection.
I'd like to jump in here too, this is Joanne Dunn. And I would like to say, I think my young people are asking those questions because typically they are your non-traditional college student. And so they're asking the question in particular, and this might be more directed at Tom Kleiner. But I think trying to understand, once they finish school or even if they didn't finish school, what what supports are in the community? Or um to help them on-ramp, not into jobs, but really look at career pathways for them. And and really take a look at um young people who have some kind of um struggles, who are, who have potential, but they're struggling. And need access to not only um the mentorship, but the academic enrichment supports. Because they might necessarily be on track for a high school diploma, but for a G E D. But also looking at how we can start to devise on-ramps for young people to get into career pathways. And I think that's, I'm going to say, I think that's why my young people are asking that question.
Yeah, and and um before the pandemic started, a little earlier than that. And we had a couple of panels at the Mount Vernon Career Center about how to. Uh, investigate and promote alternative pathways other than a college route for young people to take. And to work with our school districts on that and we said, we have to, we have to start that process again. And and Dr. Latasha Hamla Carver, who's now with uh Westchester Community Colleges on this call as well. And she did a lot with career pathways for the Westchester Department of Workforce Development Board and Career Centers. And it's really unfinished business, um, and it's something that we have to really try to integrate more with the school districts. We've done some with uh Mount Vernon and with White Plains, but there's more to do in that regard.
Thank you, and I have one more question, and I'm, I'm tend to speak on behalf of my young people because I'm very vocal if anybody knows me. But I think also COVID nineteen brought up, um, also the real digital divide that is happening in certain communities. And also amongst um certain entities. And so really taking a look at not only on-ramping young people to jobs, or really thinking about the digital um. Footprint that these young people need, yeah, they're, they're, they're technology savvy in regards to um iPads and cellphones. But when we talk about using the computer and sitting down to do the Zoom and do all of these things that will now become our new normal. I think about that and what, what is the one-stop employment center thinking in regards to really preparing folks for the digital footprint for work? And then also Dr. Hamilton in regards to how is the educational system bridging the digital divide? For not only students, but parents who are have to rear children under this new regime.
But just uh just from the Career Center, uh, quickly, I'll just say. In the available grant programs and um the CARES Act, uh, money coming to the county for um that may be available. That is actually the top priority for getting uh laptops or uh Chromebooks into the hands of young people. May want to participate in available training programs, but don't have the technology. Because, you know, we all, all of us on this call make the assumption, not so all of us, but many make the assumption that everybody has this access. And of course, as you know, um, that's not the case, so that's one of the, going to be one of the top priorities.
Um, in terms of of the school district, we um completely acknowledge that this this pandemic has really. Uh, kind of forced our hand in terms of getting devices in the hands of all of our students. And understanding that many of our families need more than one device. So we've been very aggressive with making sure we got at least one device in every family, only to find that that was totally inadequate. For families that had multiple children or uh parents who needed access to a device because they had to work. And students then could not complete their classwork um simultaneously. Um, so we have been looking at how we can reallocate our resources as we anticipate what September might look like for us. Um, in all likelihood, we will be in a distance learning environment or some kind of hybrid uh to the traditional approach. Um, so that means that we're shifting some of our commitment to textbooks, for example. So that we can uh increase our um device uh inventory. And also allowing students to take devices that were allocated to be distributed within the building in a shared capacity. On a loner capacity so that we will be able to close that digital divide. But it's a huge issue across the state, across the country, in fact, as it relates to families not having uh devices. And not just not having devices, but even having access to a service provider. Um, so that they can even get on the internet, so we're also augmenting our inventory by buying hotspots for those families who will need them as well.
So if I could just jump in.
Joanne, okay.
I, I really appreciate that that question um from Joanne and and the scholars. Um, and some of the earlier questions that were asking for the data. Um, at Westchester Children's Station, as a multi-issue children's advocacy organization, we base our advocacy on the data. And as all of us know, on the phone, there's, there's much more data that we would like than is available. Um, but we do have a a starting point for uh the data that we have on our website. But even that's not sufficient, and so all of us, COVID nineteen forced all of us to to pivot quickly to this online. Um, sort of performance, and so we just completed a survey of superintendents for all the school districts in Westchester. As well as parents to understand just what's some of the issues and barriers that Superintendent Hamilton um is speaking of. And we know that in those districts, back to I think the first question, in terms of the inequity that exists amongst districts here, municipalities in Westchester. In terms of economics and resources available, that in our large uh city school districts, families had a longer wait. To get the Chromebooks and the uh information and then, as we said, the Wi-Fi to that. Um, and frustrating for families that are also often on the front line, essential workers and and not having an adult. That can be at home and guide students through this online learning. So I do think it is important for all of us to continue to spend this time. Um, as the superintendent said, we're going to be in some sort of hybrid probably for the next year or so. But getting the information, getting the data that can drive the advocacy is a key point. And so encourage and look forward to working with the scholars and the young people to find that online data and information. That's needed to really guide decisions and resources.
And and Joanne, I know you had asked um early in the question if there are programs that offer apprenticeship. And um the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau actually has a program which is called W Day. Um, that does just that and is for youth who are seeking second chances. It is funded by the Westchester Investment Board and there's courses that we pay for that even though regardless of their past. Um, they're able to join the growing workforce, uh, we provide O C certificates. Um, we actually try to send them to getting, receiving their associate or their G E D or four-year college. And we also in that program provide them mentorship. And um we connect them with anything necessary that their, their needs, so it could be met, met. So it's very inclusive.
If I, if I may add also, um, this is Lieutenant, Mount Vernon Police Department. Um, I just also wanted to add, we were talking about mentorship programs to let everyone know that the police department also participates. And mentorship programs, uh, we are in from the elementary school up to the high school. Uh, we do the mentorship programs throughout the day, at the lunchtimes with the students. And as well as a Mount Vernon native, I recall being a part of the peer group as a freshman and having a senior mentor. And then when I became a senior, having an elementary student, um, being a big sister to her. And we are still in communication to this day, the bond that we built back in, I don't want to date myself, but back in nineteen ninety-four. Um, we are still in a relationship today. And that um mentorship program is not necessarily, I know the conversation has filtered on to. Programs of getting employment, but it also goes into the basis of what you're going to do outside of what kind of job you want to have. Or maybe you might be having some kind of turmoil going on in your family, maybe you don't have food in your house. So there's different things that the mentorship program and as well as when I was in it that we dealt with. As um in addition to just trying to get the, seek the employment and making sure the overall health and wellness. Of the individual um was intact and also just giving them a bond. Because they might not have someone outside of their own family members, that they may be able to speak with in that way. Or may be able to feel like seeing someone that's already gone past the point that where they are. That's why we went back as seniors, going back to the elementary school, so that you can show that this is the road I went, this is what I went through. And we're not so much in a gap of age that you won't feel like I'm lecturing you, but that we're actually building a bond and that we can inspire each other.
And this is, this is Mayor Howard, I don't know if y'all can hear me, but um, one of the things that I definitely wanted to say. Is that not every bit of help out here in the community is formal. Um, I've been a mentor to many and I've never officially signed up ever anywhere to be a mentor. And the way I became a mentor to many people is because people who looked at my life or felt I had something to offer approached me. Um, and sometimes that's the best relationship that you could develop, it's not going to an agency always and signing up. You know, I'm speaking especially to those of you who are sixteen and above or eighteen and above. If there's someone in the community that you respect the way they move, their style, if they feel like they're approachable, if you feel that they're about their business. Um, then sometime just take that humble moment and approach and say, you know, look, I'm, I'm a young brother, I'm a young sister, I see how you move. Um, I'm interested in this in my life, do you have a minute to sit down and have a conversation with me? And you just make that connection and develop that relationship. You know, I'm all for the typical standard mentoring and best practice mentoring where you sign up and a mentor signs up. And someone puts you through algorithms and they make a mentor match and there's a background and, you know, all of that. And I, I believe in that, but as you get a little bit older, um, you don't, you don't go through dating services when you want to date somebody. So it's the same thing, if you have a ment- if you want to mentor and you see someone that you feel is bringing something to the table. Um, if you don't know them, but you know someone who knows them, connect with them. It's, it's all about building relationships and relationships is what's going to take you through the rest of your life. Um, and and these might start off as informal, but then they become formal. And I, I say this all the time, I believe there are four levels of opportunity. Um, for relationships that are going to help you move forward in your life, having a mentor. Finding that person that's going to help you develop your agenda and your goals for your life. And then you find yourself a coach, and that's once you have your agenda and you identify what skills you want to develop. You get a coach that helps you develop those skills. And then you want to find someone who's a sponsor, someone who's going to help get you into the rooms and get you to the tables and get you to the places that you want to get. And as you continue to build your skills and your influence, then you want to take it to the next level and you find and develop those relationships. With what I call um your champion. And your champion is someone who's going to put their name on the line because they've developed a relationship with you. That's going to help you move to your next level of life, they're going to say, you know, I know this person had some hard times, they had some rough times. But I've developed a relationship with them, I've seen them volunteer, I've seen them turn their lives around. Yes, they went through this, yes, they went through that, but I believe in them and and I would put my reputation on the line for that. But you have to be worthy of that level of trust of someone. You have to, you have to make sure that when someone puts that level of trust and faith in you, that you don't mess that up. Because when people have that level of access and influence and they use it to support you and you, you kind of mess up and you get sloppy with it. You know, there's a difference, we might have a lot of good intentions, you know, intentions are great, that means you mean to do something. But you need to shift your intentions to becoming intentional. And the difference between having good intentions is intentions, you talk about it, you think about it. Being intentional means you're putting strategy and action behind it and you're looking for resources. And so when you become intentional and you become strategic, uh, then you're able to reach out and have someone help you move. Through the different places that you want to move through, there are a lot of programs that are out here, there are a lot of programs that are available. And and sometimes it's frustrating when people say, oh, there's nothing out here, um. Our phone has to be a tool and not a toy, you can Google anything you want to Google. You can pick up the phone and call six six five two three six zero and call City Hall and find out what type of services and programs are there available through the city. You can look up different agencies that are in the community and find out what they're offering, but you got to do the research, you got to do the work. Um, and and I, one thing that I respect is a grind, everybody want to talk, I'm on my grind, I'm on a hustle. But when you're ready to take your life to the next level, get on your grind and get on your hustle. And I'm not trying to preach or be hard to anyone, I'm just having real conversation. Because there's a difference between people who have skill and people who have will. People might have a lot of skill oftentimes and they want to tell you about their experience, but I would look at somebody who's. Put on a, a, a pair of slacks and some Scooby Doo's and a shirt and they went knocking on doors. And they were looking for opportunities and and saying, I'm willing to volunteer. I have someone who got out of prison yesterday and they called me, they called me. And they said, Ms. Howard, I'm back home, I'm in the community, what do you have for me? I said, I don't have a job for you right now, I says, I know that, Ms. Howard, but you have volunteer opportunities for me because I want to make sure I get connected. And and so we have to have a grind and many of you who are on the phone right now. Know that I've served as champions for some people who had some different and interesting pasts. Um, but it's because they were willing, willing to volunteer, it's because they came and they said, I want to make a difference. And they were willing to have the hard conversations and that's what we have to do, have some hard conversations. Uh, you're our brand, you're a brand and you don't need to promote Nike, you don't need to promote BMW. You need to promote yourself, you need to invest in yourself, you need to create your own personal board of directors. And find people who are going to. and find people who are going to give you advice in different areas of your life so that you can move forward. And, and we need to do it with the, you know, intentionality. It's time to play chess and not checkers. It's time to make those moves. And it's time to find out people who not only are going to learn how you move, but are going to learn how to help move you where you want to go.
Madam Mayor, skill and will, your phone is a tool, not a toy. You are your brand, taking notes. I just want to say this, Robin, thank you. I was on mute for a reason because if I were not on mute, I was trying to move us to the next conversation, the next topic. Thank you, I'm glad I did not, I'm glad I was on mute because all of this right here, we stayed on this topic for a little bit longer. And we're going to come back. And I say that because Tom, I know you wanted to talk about employment. Can you hold that thought for me for a second? Because I just want to switch gears for a second. I do want to give a little time, a little time to the reason that brought us here, and that is the protest because of the unrest. And behind me, if you recall, Madam Mayor, you led that march with our young people the other day. I still have, right, bring it up. I still, come on now. Take, Black Lives Matter, okay? I still have my sign behind me. There's a reason why I couldn't change my sign because this, this right behind me represents our young people motivating, organizing, see, it's, it's our right to be an activist, but you got to be an organizer. Because an activist and organizer are two different things. We need our activists, we got some serious activists out there. I can name them, take some time and name them. We need them, but we also need organizers because we got to get the work done. And I have this sign behind me because it just reminds us of the organizational opportunity that the young people took to march from Mount Vernon to near Rochelle. And the reason why we're here is because of the unrest. We, we know about Breonna Taylor, we know about Floyd, we know what the Floyd family is doing, we know they are now, they are now testifying, trying to change policy, right? We know Breonna, Breonna Law has been, we've got something new happening all around these injustices. And I just want to point out, let us not forget, we've had two black men, young men hung a couple of days ago. We had another 19-year-old and a 75-year-old. But I want to talk about that 19-year-old. We found her body, her body was found. So there's a lot of things still happening and you may know it and you may not know it. But the reason why I want to bring it up is because we got to talk about the criminal justice system. We have a lot of questions from our young people, from our scholars. We want to talk about a few things. And help me out scholars because I know we have a lot of questions. And I, I just want to start with the question. We can switch gears. Number one, Anthony says, Benelli says, "Why does the criminal title bring up negative traits in a societal setting or past criminal history?" Why does your title, okay, if you have, you know, criminal in your title, in other words, why does it or does it determine your future? So whatever you did in the past, and Madam Mayor, I think you kind of addressed it, right? Are you with me with the question, everybody?
Yes, this is a great place for that Molina to weigh in too, and Sherilyn Oliver.
Everybody, we want to hear from you, that's why you're here.
Yeah, so for sure, so I'll, I'll talk about this. I think, you know, part of the problem is, is, you know, we, we have conditioned from a policing perspective, and I've worked in policing and I've worked in corrections, where we condition, I think even through our training regiment, people of color to be dangerous, right? And from extension, when people take pleas and they take, and they have convictions on their record, that stigma stays with them throughout their lives. We're at a moment now where we can sort of reset that and re-change the system entirely. It, it has to not only start with police, but it has to go through our judicial process and our judicial system. And it also has to impact how we help all formerly incarcerated return and reintegrate it back into their communities. And we've done a lot of work over the last two years working with forward-thinking mayors like Mayor Patterson Howard, when she was formerly at the YMCA in Yonkers. We've worked with Joanne Dunn in her previous capacities and other nonprofit organizations to help sort of reintegrate people back into their communities and remove away that stigma. So it's important that law enforcement leaders speak out to communities that are not, that are not only impacted by overpolicing, but also speak to communities where they have this perception that if someone makes a mistake in their life, they shouldn't be given a second chance or a third chance. People make mistakes. And I think law enforcement leaders have to communicate that to members of the community so that they get a better understanding that a lot of that is driven by poverty, is driven by overpolicing, is driven by our communities have persistently have had economic inequities that has driven our criminal justice system to where it is today.
If I could just also, to Deputy Commissioner Molina's point, you know, much of what we see in the criminal justice system is really the intersection of a lot of failed social policies, lack of affordable housing and stable housing, lack of quality education, lack of access to good healthcare, mental healthcare. And, you know, it isn't, I, my experience is that it isn't true for everyone that having a criminal conviction sticks with you for the rest of your life. In fact, there are many white-collar criminals who we see people championing them on television, saying that they, you know, they paid their debt to society and now they should be given a clean slate. So my experience is that it is not, you know, across the board the case that people with criminal convictions are vilified and stigmatized. But I, I did want to say that we're at a moment too where we can do something to overcome this. You know, there was a time when you had a criminal conviction and it was on your record in New York State permanently, forever, and there was nothing you could ever do to get it off. Through the efforts of a lot of people, there has been a, a new law put into place where after a period of time, some charges can be sealed. But we have a moment now where we can move that forward because sealing of records is great, but it's not expungement of records. Sealing of records is a good first step, but it's not where we need to take this. And so when we're speaking about what we can do to help lift barriers that need not be there, that's one of the things we can do. We can get together and we can make the case for why expungement of records. Expungement meaning having a prior criminal conviction removed. Because, you know, the, the idea behind telling the world, stigmatizing people and telling the world about this criminal conviction is it somehow is illustrative of your character, of a person's character. And while it may be true that in some cases it might be, in the vast majority of cases, at least those that I have seen, that is not the case. And all that that stigmatization does is prevent a person from realizing their potential and the opportunity that they deserve to have. So I think one of the things, you know, maybe that could come out of this is a further conversation about how we can advance the cause of expungement of prior criminal convictions to ensure that people do not experience that kind of vilification and so that they have access to all of the opportunities that they should have access to. And if anybody wants to speak with me more about that and work on that with me, I would love to do that.
Okay, Joanne, Sherilyn, I will definitely be in touch with you. I'm sorry.
I can't wait, Joanne.
And as we, I just want to say this because this is the thought from some of our young scholars. To your point, Sherilyn, you know, they want to know, what are the police departments doing? And Lieutenant Kristin Mann, please weigh in. What are, what are the police departments doing in order to bridge the divide between community and police? And what kind of outreach is in place to reach the youth specifically? So if we want to give this a little thought, but also take you up on your offer after, you know, the cameras are turned off and, and we go back to our offices in our homes, maybe we can sit down and become very, very strategic. But if anybody wants to just weigh in and continue, Sherilyn, where you picked up, where you left off at? If there's anything, anything specific that the police department is doing with the community.
I would be.
Thank you, Lieutenant, thank you.
All right, yes. And just to piggyback first on that, the first last question that we just had about the villainization of being, having the criminal label. When I heard that question, what came to mind for me is that I understand with raised the age, that was part of some of the substance and why they wanted to increase the, the age limit was so that you could have those records sealed and that so our young people would have a better chance later on for some of the mistakes that they make as youth. But initially, my first thought was going to how the media portrays people of color. And our criminal record is usually what's brought up about whether we are the victim or the criminal. And it is used as to justify the attack and the incident that occurred to the victim. There are a lot of times that people want to put a label on you. And just because that you are, that you have committed a criminal act, does that mean that you are a villainous person? And it does not mean that you cannot be something later on in life. We can look throughout people, throughout history that's shown that they had arrest records. We know Marla King had a arrest record. We know that Malcolm X had an arrest record. We know about Maya Angelou and all those people who went on to be something, something great that changed the world. And if you just look in your own community, you will see other people that come, came back. We work very well with the SNUG program. That is a program within, in the community in which we're going to have convicted felons who go back and work with the police department so that we can try to mediate situations and be ongoing beastin' out in the community. There's only so much the police department can do without the community. So if you don't work with people and organizations like SNUG, there's other elements that we are not going to be able to grasp onto inside of the community. As far as your other question about what the police department is doing, as I had mentioned earlier, we are already in programs throughout every level of education here in Mount Vernon. We do mentorship programs from the elementary schools up into the high school. We do coffee with the cops. We, some of our officers have branded, reached out and started their own nonprofit organizations. As the mayor has explained before, a lot of times we're doing things, but it doesn't seem like it's getting out into the public as much as we would like it to be. And especially given the fact that if you look at most news media, they don't want to portray the positive of what's going on. What they want to portray is the negative of what's going on. So you're not going to get the high publicity of the different social reforms and different interactions of the police department trying to build a better relationship. And that's not to say no matter what we're doing is always something more we can be doing because just given the nation and what's going on, you can see no matter if you have 10 good cops, as long as you still got two bad cops, it means absolutely nothing because you still have people that are going to be victims. And the victim thing that happens when it's a fatal incident and what, how we have right now with Mr. George Floyd, and a lot of people want to bring that up about the fatal incidents, but you have just the common courtesy of having the fear of, "I'm a black woman, I'm still regardless of police officer. If I see lights and sirens behind me and I have no criminal record and I still have to have that first palpitations of, "Okay, Krista, what are you supposed to do when you're stopped by a police?" And, and I'm a police officer. Those are the same conversations I still have with my children on a, on an ongoing basis. It's not a one-time thing. And we go throughout the community and speak to other people in the community on what to do to try to build that gap. But these are things that you have to do over and over again because the fear is real. It's based upon fact. This is not some delusion that we've come up in our mind that we need to feel that we may not be safe from the people who are supposed to be our servant, from the people who are supposed to be our heroes. And so the only way to build that gap is to continue to do the things that we do and the social reforms and the community policing, whether it be from the entire department, we're, we're doing the Obama 21st policing, or like I said, we have the police officers that do it on the norm, guest speaker, on and off duty, when they're doing it with their own nonprofit organizations or if they're doing it from the Mount Vernon Police Department logo or the Mount Vernon Police Department PBA where we're giving away toys or having different programs and giving turkeys at things, and those, those things that people always see. But there's other things that go on, like I said, that I don't think gets the amount of attention when it's not just a one-time or holiday event, that it's the everyday events that we do on a daily day basis of going into the schools and trying to build a relationship with the children so that they can see us in the different light outside of our uniform, that we are human beings as well. And so that you could feel like you can come be, not just because you're having a bad incident, but you can come to me just to say, "Hey, how you doing?" I have a, a personal conversation.
Just wanted to say one thing. Also, through the Mount Vernon Police Department, we have not a youth explorers, but we have like a youth police academy program that our detective Dave Clark runs. And so the young people go through, they understand how to engage police. They understand the business of policing. It's very, very similar to the explorers program, but we just don't call it explorers. And that helps young people develop those relationships. We also have a police cultural immersion program where our police go out in teams of two or three and they are doing community policing, walking the beat, going and speaking to young people in the community, knocking on church doors, going into businesses and getting to know the people in the community and developing those relationships. And there is just more that we will be doing as we do have a new commissioner and a chief. And both of them are very, very committed to community policing and I'm the new mayor. So we're looking to do and bring a lot of innovative programs to the community like youth police interaction and initiative, YPI program. There are several things that we will be doing going forward. So look, and if you're interested, get involved because we, we know that policing has to change and especially overpolicing of our community. We need more engagement and education as opposed to just enforcement.
And to that, I would like also to add that the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau actually has two programs. One is called the Step Up Program, which is geared towards at-risk males. And the Gem Program that's reached out to at-risk youth. We also encourage and have had police interaction. We have these youth building relationship with them, interacting with the police, breaking down that barrier and that fear that they have based on the community that they live in, based on what they've seen on TV, based on what they have heard, based on what they have witnessed. And so we also invite these officers to our programs and they many times are our guest speakers. And so we also, and within the Youth Bureau, put that out there and welcome youth of all ages, all backgrounds to enroll in these programs so that bridge, we can make that bridge and close that gap with the fear of interacting with police. And that is something that we do every day within our program.
May I, may I just, I just wanted to follow up on the lieutenant's point about the SNUG program and just put on my probation hat for a minute because most of, when I've been speaking so far, I've been speaking really as a former defense attorney. But I wanted to just mention that the probation department is involved in the SNUG program and spends a lot of time in the various communities across the county. And also, Ms. Dunn, you know, when I was on the board of the shelter many years ago, the probation department, the probation department and, and actually I would meet periodically with the parents, a family night, once a month. And we would come and we would speak about, about the criminal justice system, about law enforcement and about what probation is, that hybrid of providing services and law enforcement so that, you know, people who would be involved with the probation department would have an understanding of how it works even before they got there.
I just want to say, Dr. Harris Madden had to leave. She has another engagement, but we have some questions for her. And we will definitely get them answered. And we will circle back because we want to get to youth employment, youth engagement before we leave. But I just want to, want to say, going back to Lieutenant Kristin Mann, I just want to remind, remind us that Dr. Harris Perry, she, she brought, she taught us the term called media malpractice. And she taught us that term when we had the Westchester County Forum. And media malpractice is exactly what you were talking about, Lieutenant. And the reason why I bring it up because it gets us to another, another question, a statement from, from- from, from our young scholars, and it's quite brilliant. Why am I targeted in my community by the clothes that I wear? Why am I targeted to become a man of color? You know, perhaps I wear a durag, perhaps wear a hoodie. And it goes back to media malpractice, perpetuating a stereotype. Does anybody want to help us understand why our young people feel this way? And what can we do to maybe change our behavior?
So I think I'd like to give some comment on that from a training perspective. I, I can recall years ago when I went through the police academy, a lot of times in scenario training, where they're training officers on how to stop people, engage people that they're going to get into arrest. And a lot of time, those actors performing the role of the person that, when they're being taken into custody, is wearing the urban wear of our youth at the time. And I think trainers have to understand that that can build and condition an unconscious bias where police have to engage in youth in inner cities and urban areas or other areas where those clothes, from a training standpoint, may symbolize that a person is wearing something wrong. From a policing and law enforcement and training standpoint, we could, we can perpetuate that, that media's misperception when we incorporate those types of images from a police training standpoint. And we have to sort of move, we have to move away from that in law enforcement.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Yes, I will add to it. I totally agree with him with the, the training aspect. And I know it's not necessarily with clothing, but I remember speaking with some officers and some of the young people, you know, the dancing, it was, they get light when they would stand in a circle and start clapping and start dancing. And oftentimes, we have officers that are not from our community, so they don't know the culture of our community. So all they saw was a gathering of young people and, and assumed that it was going to be something negative. And then you had to immediately just let them know, they just watch, they're just dancing, they're just enjoying it, rejoin in, they probably would like it, you know? And so it becomes a part of not only just training, but letting, like the mayor said, the culture emergent, letting those officers know when they come to this community, you need to know about this culture that you are going to police so that you don't misinterpret things, so that you don't come with the bias. Because it is a bias on how you dress. It's a bias if you walk into a store and they automatically assume how much money you have. It's a bias on the way you look. And they, they think how intelligent you're going to be just based upon the way you look. And it goes to just trying to make it more so that we can easily victimize and villainize how you, who you are based upon how you look, that it's a justification for what happened to you based upon how you look, when it shouldn't be that. It should be just based upon the incidents and the probable cause or whatever the cause was, not just based upon what you look like. Because if you really look at the calls that we get, a lot of the times, your outfit is going to be generalized to everybody that's walking down the block. And the summertime is going to be a t-shirt and a pair of shorts. And in back in the days, it used to be some tents, and now it'll be sneakers and a hat. And you look down the block, it's going to be almost every little black boy, boy of color walking down the block is going to be dressed like that. In the wintertime, it's going to be a person likely in a hoodie and, and a pair of jeans. So getting into the mindset that everybody that's dressed like that doesn't mean that they're partaking in any kind of criminal activity, that that's just the look of, of the, the environment that you're walking in doesn't make you a criminal. And that's something that we have to do in training, not just as police officers, but as a society. As you explained, that it's a media and a culture. So you have these people that come into your community and all they see is what the media has portrayed. They've now jaded and come into the situation with this implicit bias that, okay, I know what we need to look for, to look for criminal, when that's not necessarily the case.
And I think, Lieutenant, I think you definitely hit upon some of Edwina's questions. You answered a lot of that because that's, yeah, thank you for that. Thank you. Anybody else we need to hear from? Am I missing anyone? Please jump in. Because I know a lot more to talk about. Got it, got it. EP, thank you so much for that. On that note, I know we said until six o'clock, and we have a lot more to talk about. So what I'm going to ask you to do, panelists, what I'd like for you to do is think about in your closing remarks, we're talking about the last topic, civic engagement. Our scholars want to know, what can they do? What wisdom, what knowledge, what words, I call it, always call it pearls of wisdom. What can you share and tell them that they can do to be civically engaged, to change the narrative, shift the paradigm that they can do right now that can change this narrative? I just want to start, if you want to, Pastor Jared Morton, are you here? Are you ready? Is your mic, is your mic open? So in your closing remarks, because these are going to, these, these are our closing remarks. And if you can just pass the baton and some pearls of wisdom to our young scholars on what they can do.
All right. Can you repeat the quick focus again?
Absolutely. We're talking about civic engagement. And, and the scholars wanted to know, what can they do? How can they become civically engaged? They, they're protesting, they're, they're going to release, but what can they do? For example, can they, you know, join an organization? Can they run for a particular office while they're in school? What can they actually do in this time in their lives to change the narrative? And if anybody wants to weigh in to give them very specific points?
Okay. So first of all, so thank you all. This has been wonderful. What I want to tell you practically, so the reality of it is, is that it's always been the young people who have made the moves and forced the needle to be moved in any movement. It's about organization. First thing is, is as the mayor said earlier, and so many others said, you, you hone your skills so that you can organize, so that you can critically think. You also identify those individuals that can be mentors, can be champions, can be coaches for you that you could, that will not just tell you anything you want to hear, but tell you what you specifically need. As it pertains to practical experience, yes, getting involved in things like, or established organizations help you to be able to understand how the dynamics of how organizations work. But most of all, it's a matter of you deciding on which is that cause that you want to champion yourselves, make sure that you do enough research on it to, to organize your thoughts and your actions, and make sure that you understand how it applies to the laws and the changes, changes of the laws. That's how you get involved. And that's how you ensure that you move the needle. And also, the last thing is, is remember that it's not always about what you just want to do, but it's also about a collaboration of all of the things put together. So make sure you're paying attention to also what is happening in other movements that may intersect and intertwine with what you're trying to achieve.
Thank you, Pastor. First Deputy Commissioner?
Yes, again, thank you for having me. And if I can give the young people, I think the best thing that you can do is every adult person that you have a relationship that's in your life, if that person hasn't registered to vote, if they're registered to vote, encourage them to vote and learn about people that are running for office. Because at the end of the day, the elected officials that we select to lead our communities, whether they're mayors, county executives, our state representatives, will define the type of community and government that we'll have and create opportunities for us. So I think when young people engage their parents, their grandparents, older siblings, even themselves when they come of age to vote, encouraging the people that are in your life that are eligible to vote and have them vote and participate in this upcoming census would be significant in defining the future of our country.
Thank you. Lieutenant Krista Mann?
Yes, you kind of took what I was about to say about making sure. I know that as, as young people, they may not be 18 yet and be able to vote, but they can get someone to the polls and make sure that they vote. So the first step will be to research and know who it is, who is your senator, who's your councilman. And then you can write letters. It doesn't necessarily have to be at the time of the, of any kind of election, but make sure you can start a letter campaign and know that it's, one person can make a difference because everybody uses the social media as a youth. So whatever you're doing, once you have researched it, you know what you're talking about, share it. Because it means nothing if you hoard it to yourself. So share it with your peers and let them know what you're doing and getting them involved. And you branch out to others, and it keeps getting bigger and bigger until it becomes a large movement, and you're going to make a change. As like I said from the beginning of the onset, when you look at the history that of the movements of everything that happened with civil rights, it started with the youth. So what, what the voice that you have today is something that your ancestors already instilled with you. Go forward. The way that you guys have spoken today has empowered me, made me want to inspire, I'm sorry, inspired me to want to go forth and do something. So please, my name is easy to remember. It's Lieutenant Mann, Court of Police Department. I'll put my email down here in the group chat. You can reach out to me at any time. So please, if there's anything that I can do, if you want to partner with something, let me know, hit me up. I'll work with the Youth Bureau all the time. There's other offices, like I said, that are willing and able. The mayor mentioned Detective Clark. There's so many others. Officer Sophia, who does YCOP. So please, let us know. We want to hear from you. Reach out to us. I'll put my number there.
Got you, Lieutenant. Thank you so much. Deputy Commissioner Pulver?
Understand your individual and collective power as human beings and members of an advocacy group, voting for sure, and telling, if you're not old enough to vote, or that the people in your life who are, do, think about when you get older, running for office. You have, and you'll understand the issues as you, as you grow up. Run for office and raise difficult issues. Let people squirm a little bit to understand where the conversation needs to go. And finally, I would say that as you determine how you're going to advocate and what issues you're going to advocate for, don't be waylaid by people who are resistant to making things better. We spend a lot of time trying to persuade the people who want the status quo to remain. We've got to leave those people behind. Their history, we have to move to the future. And so my advice to you is, as you're charting your path, those people who are trying to stand in your way because they don't want things to change, ignore them and move forward.
Thank you. Executive Director, Westchester Children's Association, Allison Lake?
Good evening. So I want to add my thank you to everyone else for inviting me to participate on this panel this evening. I will add, everyone has said voting, which is important. I want young people to know that there are new voting laws in New York that allow 16 and 17-year-olds to pre-register to vote. And so if you do that at 16 and 17, by the time you turn 18, wherever you are, if you're in school or maybe not still living in the city of Mount Vernon, you would be registered to vote. And so New York has made in the last year some, it said legislation to make voting easier in terms of absentee ballot, in terms of early voting. And so we should understand what these new laws mean because it is to help get people to the polls. So I just wanted to start with that. I guess the other piece as an advocacy organization, I started off by saying that we've been involved in training young people at the youth shelter of Westchester, Boys and Girls Club, Innuishell, Peak School District, et cetera. And we try doing that and look forward to doing that. And so I want to offer that, if there is a group of young people that want some basic advocacy training, have staff that would be happy to come out and, and offer that. And what we cover is, you know, crafting your message, which I think someone spoke about. What is the cause that you're interested in? Who are the decision makers? Is it something that is city-based, county, state, or even federal? You know, you know sort of the level that you are, are working towards. And then to think of allies, both those that are sort of obvious, but sometimes there can be some unconventional allies that you may not think who also support your cause. And so we want to really think of sort of the broader group of constituents that maybe can help you come along. And then I would say to, to understand how decisions are made. Last week or the week before, I guess, the decisions for school budgets and school boards, that vote was here in, in Westchester. So there were a lot of questions early on about how school districts were run and made decisions and resources were allocated. That happens at the school board level. And young people can certainly have a voice in that process of who is on their school board, what their school budgets look like. And so to educate yourself at that level. The county level, same thing. There's a county budget. We, we had Damian Harris from the County Youth Bureau. Debbie's here from the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau. They receive funding from the county. The county holds public hearings around their, their budget. You and anybody else that has something to say about how we spend our county tax dollars needs to participate in these public hearing pieces. And finally, I guess I would say to, to the scholars and young people, it doesn't take a lot. You, you don't need a mass, especially in a county like Westchester. If there are 20 or 30 people, someone, the lieutenant mentioned a letter writing campaign, or a call-in campaign, or an email campaign. If our county legislators receive something from 15 to 20 people, they're going to pay attention. And so sometimes I think, you know, we, we set ourselves up thinking, I have to sort of have this large group or have to know every answer. You do not. No one has all the answers. But your voice is valuable. They're there to work for you. And so I would just encourage you to get involved at that school board level, at the county level, and beyond, onto the state, depending on what your issues are. And know that there are people who are willing to help you. And as I said, at Westchester Children's Association, you go on our website and you put in Project 2020, you'll find some tools and resources that we are still developing to help people as we move into this next election. So thank you again for having me. I look forward to continuing the partnership.
Indeed. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Hamilton?
He had to leave.
Okay. Well, we, just, let's say thank you. Because he switched his, his calendar to join us today, and it was well worth it. Definitely well worth it. Tom Clyer, Executive Director, Westchester Putnam Workforce Development Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. And, you know, again, with regard to workforce employment opportunities, reach out to us. We'll continue to partner with all of you.
And just a, a closing word. Let me just step out of my role as the Westchester Workforce Development Board Director, and, and try to address your initial question in this segment in terms of what young people can do at this time other than voting, including voting. And let me just say, we're at a point in time where there's really a sea change in a lot of people's thinking, whites and blacks. And because, for example, just to use two statistics, the percentage of those in the country a month ago that supported the right of NFL players to kneel during the anthem was 28%. It is now 53%. It was regarded as the greatest sea change in a social issue in the shortest period of time in our history. And the percentage of whites and blacks, or whites particularly, that now support, generally support the Black Lives Matter movement is now in positive territory as a country. And that really just happened in, because of, obviously because of really two things. Because, because of what happened in Minneapolis, but also because of the pandemic and those things coming together. So for young people particularly, this is a moment in time where people and progressive change is really going to be listened to because people are paying attention. So what all of you are doing to perpetuate that, this is the moment, particularly for those who are young and keep having.
Thank you. Attorney Cliff Christoph?
He jumped off as well. He had to leave.
Okay. Well, we want to thank him as well, switching gears. And before we go to the mayor and, and Ms. Dunn, before we, we close with your final thoughts, I just want to give, give the mic to our young scholars, our future champions, as they have been called today by our panelists. Anybody want to jump in?
Edwina and William, if they wanted to jump in. Nicholas Davis could jump in. Nick, you're on mute, Nick.
Okay. Does he need a minute? Because we, we can definitely go to Debbie.
I'm here. I just want to say thank everybody for arranging their schedules around to make this happen for us. And thank you for hearing our voices and answering the questions that would like to be answered. Oh, yeah. Just like to thank you guys for everything.
Okay. Well said. Anybody else? Okay. Well said. Anybody else?
I just want to also say thank you. Also, I learned a lot on this Zoom and I'm definitely gonna say everything that they told me and definitely put into action.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I know the mayor had to jump off. The mayor had to go to the next thing as well. And I just want to give some time, just a moment or two before we go, to our Executive Director, Joanne Dunn.
Well, I want to thank everybody for joining us and having this conversation. I particularly, those who are on the panel, I'd like to thank you because I had this crazy idea on a Friday afternoon after speaking with my young scholars here at the shelter. And literally sent an email and you guys said yes. And for me, just because you said yes, I appreciate you for being here. And I particularly think about our young people here at the shelter, who a lot of times are frowned upon, a lot of times who don't given the opportunity to speak up, who sometimes are shunned because of, per se, their record. And I think that the opportunity that they had today to elevate their voice and speak on topics that resonate home to them, we didn't even touch half of the questions that they had because they didn't, we didn't even touch on the black wealth gap and how do we achieve that in chocolate cities? We didn't talk about, you know, how do we drive economic opportunities in cities that really don't have adequate funding? We didn't get to talk about how young people who didn't finish school, how do we even on-ramp them to careers? And, and I think that there's so much from this conversation that we know that this conversation is going to be the first of many. And I'm so proud of our young people, our young scholars. Thank you, Tracy, for that, that, that nomenclature. Because I think that these is what, we have to change. You know, my mom used to say, if you change your thinking, you'll change your way of life. And so with our young scholars, they are, they need to harness their power. They need to harness the here and now and really walk in it. And so today was just that opportunity for them to do so. This is just the beginning. We're not done yet. We have many more virtual town halls that we want to put on. And, and not only do, you know, all lives matter, but right now, we're in this moment, I serve 90% African-American, black males. I want them to know that they can be better, they can do better. And we're here as a system and a society to push them to their better. And I want them to harness that. And for me, this forum has my heart overjoyed. I am so appreciative of all of you for joining us on the panel and in virtual land, on Facebook. We know we had some challenges, but without, without progress, there is no, you know, without struggle, there is no progress. So everything has to have some hiccups in it. But I just appreciate you all. And Tracy and Clarissa, I extend a very, very nice thank you because you guys are my Zoom ninjas here and really helping us out. And I really want to thank the panel for really saying yes. And I'd really like to say that we will continue this conversation. Our young people across this community, across this county, they need to be heard. And not only do they need to be heard, but as we talk to them, they're going to be the change agents to really change the narrative. And so we need to empower them and employ them that they have our support and our unwavering commitment to do such.
Okay. Well said. The cracks in a crisis that are revealed create opportunities for those leaders that are committed to change. Thank you to each and every leader on this Zoom forum. Thank you to our future champions. Thank you to our young scholars. Until the next time, we'll see you soon.